The county council will reconvene in open session approximately 11:30 a.m. to hold a budget work session. Need a motion to convene in a closed work session to discuss personnel matter relating to independent legal counsel in accordance with Section 3-305b 1 of the general provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland to protect the confidentiality of the individual. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Okay, we're going to reconvene in open work session and with us, we have Ms. Olin.
And John will be here in a minute.
John will be here in a minute. Alrighty. Now, what this is, is budget recap. We're a little bit behind. On your desk, you have a list of items that we discussed. Since this is a recap and we have with you the county council budget, if you want to talk about that, what we'll do. Ms. Harley, do you want to read this to go through? I think you can direct that better than I can.
What do you mean to do?
Go down the list so that we can see if anybody wants to talk about any of the items.
Do we have to go down each one or do we just need to see if someone needs to talk about an item?
What's that?
Do we need to go down the entire list?
Yes.
I mean, why don't we just ask if someone's got an item they want to talk about?
Alright. Is there anything in front of you that you want to talk about before we go down the list?
You're defeating the purpose, Larry.
Just go down the list and what you want to talk about, talk about.
The thing is, I can read every single one of them if you want. Say yes or no. Alright, county council, do we want to talk about the county council budget?
I think we should slash the county council salaries if they're too high. I'm just kidding.
I know, that was a joke. Thank you very much. Anything else? Alright, circuit court, do we have anything on the circuit court that you want to discuss? Alright. Orphans court, anything on the orphans court? State's attorney? County executive's budget? Anything on county executive's budget? He's not here, but we can wait. Alright.
I can answer any questions either.
What's that?
I can answer any questions either.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Olin or Mr. Posoda? Okay. Moving on to community promotions. Nothing on community promotions. The elections office, any discussion on the elections office?
Well, there was quite an increase, I think, wasn't there, on the election?
Use your mic.
I said there was quite an increase. You want to explain that? I mean, I-
Yeah, the increases related to the additional legislation that has come down. And again, as we discussed, departments have at times have contingency within their budget. So because in the past, they have underspent their budget, we did give them their total request, but we've put in a line item that they have to come back and ask for a transfer so they can't just spend without any oversight.
Well, that's one of the departments that you're creating a contingency for that one department, right?
Yeah, and other departments, like I believe even the council has a contingency within their department.
Is that correct?
That's correct. That's always been there, though.
Yeah, it's always been there.
But again, this is a way to actually have control over them and know what they're spending without just having it in a line item. And so creating the contingency, I believe, creates more control than just giving it to them in the lines that they've asked for.
So basically, what we have now is two contingency funds. We have, or more than one, more than two. What's the word I want to use? Two contingency vehicles. We've got a contingency, general contingency in the county that the county council has control of. And then you'll have contingencies over certain departments that the county executive only has control of.
Correct, and the department has control over.
Wait a minute, the department heads don't have control over-
Well, the department head has the ability to make the request-
Correct, yeah.
-to the administration. Sorry, I just, I'm going to start coughing.
Water?
No, I should have not put that mint in my mouth and now it's tickled the back of my throat. I apologize.
That happened to me when I walked in this morning.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
I think the way that you have it in the, as a line item within the department, if they go into that contingency, they would not have to come before county council for approval.
That's true.
Whereas the contingency fund, they would.
Correct, and but-
Just for you guys, your clarification, that is what they're trying to do.
That's correct.
But there are other departments, as I stated, county council is one of them, that has line items in there. Because there are things that come up during the year that every department experiences. And so for certain departments, county council again being one, and then for this one specifically, we put this in place so that they can't just spend without asking for approval from somebody. We feel that it's appropriate, based on the legislation that came down, instead of having to come back and do a council meeting, we felt it was appropriate to put the money here to give us that flexibility. Because when it happens, it's going to be something that all of a sudden, the state's going to give us an invoice for new election equipment or new polling books or new. And so we know those things are coming, but I don't know which line they're coming in. This gives us some control to be able to put it in the appropriate line when it gets there.
And if my memory serves me right, in their specific case, by law, they're going to have to have a second-
As of right now, yes.
-as of right now, so there's that anticipation that could change, whatever, but that's a-
Correct.
-example of, you know, to fund that, they have to come and-
And-
Request those funds.
Correct. So we felt it was appropriate to give them the increase that they were looking for, but to give us some control over where that increase is. Because the other advantage, honestly, to having it in contingency is that, let's say you give it to them in line item X, you know, polling books. I am totally making up this example, so please take this as a total example. You give it to them in polling books. They spend it in polling books, but then really didn't need it in polling books, needed it somewhere else, or they lose track of the fact that they overspent this line and underspent this line. This way, it is in control and you can watch it and see where they need it versus putting it in lines where we're not sure that they need it yet.
Well, you know, government has always been accused of, you know, okay, we've got so much money left over at the end of the year, we've got to spend it. So I think it's, I've always liked contingency funds. Like you say, it gives more control. And you don't see the problems coming along like, okay, so we've got this money here, we've got to spend it. Now, I hope, and I hope that would, you know, at the end of the year, if they don't need it, they won't spend it.
Well, and they, they've proven, if they don't need it, they don't spend it. Because they have historically underspent their budget the last three years. So they have historically underspent their budget. Again, instead of holding them to the line, because they've historically underspent, we know there's all this legislation that has been passed that we don't yet know the cost. We're giving them their request, but we're putting controls in place.
That's fine. Okay, good explanation.
Ms. Harley, there was some discussion about going outside the charter. Are we violating the charter by doing a contingency like that?
The contingency fund does require county council approval. We would have to look at that charter provision.
I've looked at the charter provision and we're not violating the- The charter provision is written such that you can transfer within the department, within categories, within a department, and it doesn't matter what line you have called it. You can transfer within the department without council approval. If I need funding either from contingency or from another department, because another department has underspent and we need money from somewhere else and they've got it, it's got to come to council. And it can't come from council from another department except contingency, except in the last quarter of the fiscal year.
So different provision, though, specifically for contingency transfers. So you need to look at that provision.
Well, then, we would have to-
Are we talking about two different, just for clarification, we keep using the term contingency?
I mean, we could call it unallocated if we wanted.
Right, right, right. We're talking about two different animals here.
Because, again, I could change every individual line in the departments to unallocated if we wanted, if we had concern about the title contingency. Because, again, we have unallocated in multiple locations.
Because the charter is applying to the county's-
Contingency.
-contingency fund. You're specifically talking about, like in your example, this is just a contingency within the, in this example, within the department of elections.
Maybe I need to change everybody's department, every line that says contingency.
Unallocated or allocated or something.
I can call it unallocated. If you would like that, I can make that change.
It probably would help some of the confusion, I think.
I don't know about that. Okay, any more discussion?
Reiterating it, I think, would help.
How many, if I could?
Mr. Cannon.
I'm not familiar with, and I'd probably have to review it again, I don't have the charter in front of me, but I'm not familiar with that many unallocated line items. I don't feel comfortable with having a contingency within a department. I mean, a budget is a budget and that's the purpose for it. I don't think it's an inconvenience for any department to have to come before the council on any major new allocations. And any minor transfers, as you suggested, between one operational budget item to another is well within their right. So I just think that when we ask them and we approve their budget, that is their budget, and creating a contingency fund where if they go over budget, they could just go into that, I'm just not a real fan of that.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
My only response to that, Mr. Cannon, would be, I mean, that's not the intent. That's not why they have that there, and it's not in all of the departments. This is just, once again, this one's kind of the class's example. They know there's going to be additional spending for the election, but due to the legislation just happening, et cetera, that exact amount's just not clear at this point. So, you know, they're being proactive, which I think is a very good thing.
Well, and I understand that, too. I mean, in this case, more than any. But again, in this case, I think it would be good for them to come to the council and say, here's what's occurring. The state of Maryland is implementing these exorbitant expenses that we're going to have to pay for. I mean, if the council knows that, the council may be able to, you know, talk to the general assembly or talk to the district's delegation and try to address that if it is, if it's a problem. But we may not know to the degree of what type of problem has been created if we're not involved in the contingency transfer.
I've given the explanation as to why I think it's the appropriate location for it, because again, we know there will be expenses for this department.
Yeah. I really appreciate that. It's just two different schools of thoughts. I have a lot of respect for what you're putting together, Pam, but I just, I just don't feel comfortable with it. That's just my personal perspective.
Mr. Hastings, I think you had a question.
Yeah, just to be clear, this is not in every single-
It's not in every single department. I know that there are contingency line items in rec parks and tourism because they've got, they're a standalone fund. And so they, you know, they're always putting on new events every year and they don't know exactly what they're going to spend, so they put in a contingency in there. I happen to know that one because that's where I just spent my last seven years. So that one sticks out. But I can run the contingency line and let you know all the departments. I know, as I said, it will impact county council. Your budget would, if I had to move that number to somewhere else, it would impact your department and it would impact other departments as well. And it, so it's, they're there because unexpected things happen. And this one, we actually have expected things going to happen. We just don't know the value of them yet.
I'm sensitive to Mr. Cannon's point of, that, you know, you want to be able to have as much control over possible as, over these particular items and you want to be able to be clear and consistent in the, I guess, the general thought process, that the more that we know exactly what's happening within each department, then the better. But you were saying specifically that this is not going to be for each one of these, this is specific for specific counts and this is not, even if there probably were a bigger item, we'd still have to come back if it were, especially for a larger than the contingent amount, right? You'd have to then come back.
And, I mean, you also have to take into account, you're creating this budget, we started this budget process back in January, 18 months before the end of the fiscal year that we're trying to budget. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know exactly what we're going to spend in every department, and so we make our best estimates. And this was one way to make our best estimate, but still give us control.
I mean, I feel sensitive to Mr. Cannon's comments as well, because if the elections department needed funding and they came to us, I don't think we would turn them down. So I kind of think we're, I appreciate what you're doing and it sounds good in a sense, but I think we're doing a, this isn't a bad precedence.
I could have put this in the lines that they'd asked for and we never would have seen this contingency, but I wouldn't have had the control as the administration over them spending it.
And that's not what we like to hear.
But again, if I had put it in the lines that they'd requested, then they would never have had to come back to me to spend it.
Ms. Harley?
So I wasn't here when the contingency line item was put into the county council's budget. I'm assuming that was done, you know, years ago when Matt Kramer was in this position. But to my recollection, in order to get money out of contingency, this body is always notified from the county council budget. And I believe, you know, my thought process on that is the reason why it was put in the council's budget is because in order to get money out of the contingency fund, you need the county executive's endorsement in order to do that. And that conflicts with the charter provision that says the county executive doesn't have any control over the county executive's budget. So that's my thoughts on why it was put there in the first place.
Alright, any more comments or thoughts?
Well, I guess my only comment would be, our role in this process is a macro role. And I look at, what we're talking about right here is definitely micro management, so, which is not our role.
Alright, anything else? Next is finance. Ms. Olin, do you have anything to say on that?
I didn't ask any questions, so I don't have any-
I was just pointing a finger at you.
I will hold off until you have a question.
Yes, I was just teasing you. Do we have any questions on finance? Ms. Harley, do you have anything? Okay, nothing, we'll move on. Public accountant. Anything on a public accountant? Department of law.
I had a question on the law department.
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
And I appreciate how you broke this down within departments to see, to make it a true budget, a true snapshot of what that department's spending. But is there also a law contract in the budget? It looks, maybe I'm not reading it correctly, but it, when I'm looking at Munis.
Well, we moved, I, there was a, it's gotten muddled over the years as to which line it gets budgeted and which line it gets paid from.
Okay.
So I tried to make the two the same. So in fiscal '21, we had a contractual services line where we budgeted it, but we've been spending it out of the contractual services legal line. And so to make the two consistent, I put the budget where we've been spending it. It's all in the same department, it just happens to move down a line.
Alright, any more questions? Human resources? Planning and zoning? Anything on planning and zoning? General services? IT? I heard somebody cleared their throat. Anything on information technology? Yes, sir?
I will say that, you know, I, just so it's said, we need to continue to focus on IT, on security issues. More and more and more and more local governments are being hacked and then having to pay a fee, which legit won't have to pay, you know, or others won't be able to pay. So we really need to be serious about that. And I don't know how best to get our IT department's attention to understand that. But I want to make it very clear that, and I'm sure that they probably are, but that's a big deal.
I just want to clarify, are you getting information that we're not?
I have not seen yet any level of understanding that we are putting, it has not been emphasized in any time I've interacted with the department, but that's just my, you know, macro level view and I don't see on the day to day. But the more I see from what, from what Conduit Street has put out, from what, you know, you name it, what has happened to other local governments in Maryland, it's a, it's a big emerging threat and we need to make sure that we're taking that serious. And if we need to budget for that in the coming year or something along those lines, then that would be helpful.
I just wanted to, I just want to be extremely clear, we do take it serious.
Good.
And his point is that we're not going to cut this budget for IT department.
Right. Well, and I will, I will say that one of the things I've witnessed as being in departments, we have switched to cloud-based products and resources for the redundancy that those create versus having your server here and the server itself potentially being attacked. So I do know that we have made those choices for the very reason that they do provide us additional levels of security.
Just out of curiosity, do we have a ransomware policy if it happened in the next hour? I mean, do we have a policy?
I would have to ask the question to IT. I am not aware of one.
Exactly, something we probably should explore because the, unfortunately, the reality, it is what it is. But when it happens, you have a very short window to make that decision and, you know, as painful as it can be sometimes, you know, that's the route, that's why governments sometimes pay, because the cost to fix it can far exceed the cost to pay and-
I can discuss it with John Monar.
Okay, thanks.
And that's not directly related to this budget, but it's something that we do need to keep in mind and consider in the future. And I agree with you and Mr. Hastings as well.
The city of Salisbury, by the way, has a, you will be put on probation. They have, if, they will send out a phishing email and if you click on it, you will be notified and you will be warned. And then they will go, if it happens one more time, they have a specific policy and if you go three times, you're, you're going to face action. And that's, that's because they take it so seriously and I feel like we really need to step up our game, Joe. So, but that's not for this budget, just forward looking. So, thank you.
We can work on that in the future. Thank you. Next is liquor license board. Do we have any questions or comments on the liquor license board? Sheriff's office. Anything on the sheriff's office?
Did, did the sheriff's office, I think last I heard that they were going to come back potentially with more increases. Did that ever happen? I don't remember.
No, they have not come back to me with anything additional.
Nothing? Okay. Any more questions or comments on the sheriff's office? Next, we have Salisbury fire and ambulance. Do we have anything on that? Any questions or comments on that? That hasn't changed. Do you know when that contract is up?
This is the last year, I believe.
This is the last year and I guess we'll have to start discussions soon. Alright, volunteer ambulance. Any questions, concerns or thoughts on the volunteer ambulance? Alright, volunteer fire.
Reminder, this is the department where I need to, that a change needs to be made in regards to the typo, that it should be $440,000 instead of $44,000.
Thank you. I appreciate you submitting that.
We had a lot of upset people.
I apologize.
No, it's totally fine. They like it in writings.
So it is, it will, it will be fixed.
It's a better outcome. Thank you. Corrections department, everything for the DOC. No questions, moving on, emergency services. Any questions, comments? Alright, moving on to humane society, protection of animals. Any questions or comments? Alright, moving on. Public works. Any questions or comments on public works? Alright. Mosquito control. Any questions on mosquito control? Always needed. Gypsy moth. Anything on the gypsy moth control?
I will be, by the way, within the coming year. I do want to actually address more of the gyp, the funds that come through from the state that we usually get. I don't forget how much the amount is for gypsy moth as well as for a mosquito. I think it's like $50,000 or something that we're supposed to get from the Department of Ag every year that we used to put. The method and approach, I think, is something that we could do a better job on and we could be more innovative on, but that's not for this year's budget, but I will be coming to the, to the executive's office to try to talk, to show options of what potentially could happen for forward looking. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Nothing on gypsy moths? The Board of Education, we'll be meeting with them around 12:30. Anything? Any discussion? Alright, moving on. Community college, Warwick.
Didn't we get a request for an increase from them?
We actually got a request that they are amending their budget, but they are not changing the amount that they're requesting from us.
Okay.
So the amount that is in here is the amount that they had requested.
Now, there was some discussion, maybe two weeks ago, that Mr. Hoy would, or Dr. Hoy would possibly come in front of us for an increase?
He submitted a letter to us, did I? He submitted a letter to, to the administration that basically says, is their attached budget proposal, Laura got a copy of it as well, and it-
Got two, right?
Yeah.
It does not change, it does not change the amount. So again, they've increased their total budget based on additional funding that they're getting from other sources, but they're not looking for any additional funding from us.
Alright, because I was thinking maybe in the future, they were going to come to us before we approved the budget. Okay, anything else? Public library. We met with the library, Ms. Ackley?
I just had a question on the public library. What is the, the maintenance of effort or the state mandate to put in?
It's like a $500,000 number. I did not bring that with me.
So that's almost an additional million they're asking for?
And we have historically, and I did bring with me, our historical funding. Since 2015, we have provided for, basically $1.1 million in 2015 up to the $1.458 that we are, were providing in 2021. And then we're asking, and that's the non-capital piece, there was $50,000 of capital in 2021. And then they're asking $1,538. And we are one of the lowest counties in the state for funding of our local library.
They were also, weren't they flat funded the previous three years?
Yeah.
They were flat funded in, so 1920 and '21, they got the exact same operating amount. We did give them in '21, $50,000 to help with a bookmobile. Twenty-one.
So do you know if they're open yet?
It's by appointment. By appointment.
Still, they haven't opened their doors, okay.
Worcester County's library is open.
Worcester County is open, okay.
So we have to fund them $529,549.
Do you have any, do you know when they will be fully open?
I do not know that answer. I mean, the governor's information came out a week ago, so like us, people are still digesting it and making the, what they feel are the appropriate changes for the patrons that they have.
I didn't see in their, in Munis, the legislative bond bill that we got from them for the library.
We don't, I think that goes directly to the library, doesn't come through us.
Do you know how much they received?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Anything else on the library? Alright, if there's nothing else, we'll move on. Tri-county council. Mr. Holloway?
When they were in, the other week, it came up that they had donated a number of buses and trolleys to, or trolleys to municipality that doesn't fund them. And let's see, they're asking for, what is it, $289,000 more? You know, they didn't donate them to Worcester County or Somerset County or anybody. They donated them to somebody that doesn't fund them whatsoever. And I didn't see any real strong needs for extra funding for them, so I think we should take that out. real strong needs for extra funding for them, so I think we should take that out. We can move it to either, um, first responders, pardon me?
Go ahead, was it EMS?
EMS, Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, um, wherever, but, um, I think we, we could move it to roads as far as that goes, you know? So, um, instead of giving away your assets, especially to somebody that doesn't fund you, you know, they could have, um, sold them on Gov.Dot deals, or they could have, um, sold them at a local auction, so...
To, to be clear, you want to be punitive to shore transit with inside of Tri-County Council for the donation of a vehicle previously, um, we don't know, well, first of all, how much would punitive damage do you want to put towards them? How, how much do you want to hurt them for?
I'm not talking about hurting them or damaging them, I'm, I'm talking about cutting their budget, don't, please don't use, don't use them statements.
This is what it is.
You're saying, how much do you want to hurt them?
Because, I bring this up because at the Tri-County Council meeting, we talked about this, actually, and only, it was last night or two nights ago, and it was 1,200 dollars, it was...
What was 1,200 dollars?
The, the amount that they get for donating a vehicle, for, for selling the vehicle before was only 1,200 bucks, and they had another one that was 800 dollars, so it's, it's not a, uh, this is not an amount that is, uh, going to be, you know...
They're, they're saying the assess, the appraisals was only 1,200 dollars or 800 dollars?
That, no, that's the amount that they got when they went to go sell the previous vehicles before, so donating, you know, 1,200, 800 dollars to the city of, to the city of Salisbury, or to program that will help us internally, that's, uh, that doesn't seem like something out of, uh, out of the ordinary, I think that's, uh, an appropriate, and, and furthermore, you know, that's their decision, I think they do a great job in general, they are, they look at this as a regional, uh, approach, we are, you know, we are the hub of the Lower Eastern Shore, let alone tomorrow, so, I don't think it was out of the norm, even though, yes, they could have probably got funds elsewhere, but the amount that they would have gotten was literally only in the 800 dollar to a 1,200 dollar, you know, scrap metal essentially range.
Do you have those appraisals available?
I mean, we, I'm sure you can call, uh...
Well, I asked for all that stuff, and I, I see, I got all these attachments, but when I looked for them, I couldn't find them, so, um, you know, I've asked for all that information, and I never got it, but, you know, if there was appraisals made, um, you know, that's, that's fine, I'd be glad to look at them, but...
Well, it did, it did come up at, uh, on Wednesday's meeting, Brad Belichick, I could probably, we could probably reach Mr. Belichick and he could bring it up.
Yeah, and, I mean, the municipality's in the Tri-County area, and so, I mean, it still benefits the Tri-County area.
He did submit the, uh, a letter, actually, there was two letters that were sent from Tri-County Council, um, just the supporting documentation wasn't there, and I think that's because of the size, the amount of supporting that documentation that they're sending, but they did a summary of what they're submitting, and they mailed the hard copy, so as soon as I get that in the mail, I can send that to everyone.
Thank you.
And we are, we, Wycomico County is 50%, Worcester is 25, and Somerset is 25?
I believe so, let me, I have to pull another document.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at what they sent us.
Just have to go into the other binder, give me one second.
All right.
Can I make a comment?
Mr. Cannon, go ahead.
Thanks, thank you. Yes, uh, I mean, as far as the, how, how the, you know, the funding is broken down between counties, it's no different than, I guess, the arrangements we also make with Warwick Community College, Wycomico always seems to take the, the larger percentage, and that's understood. In regard to this, all I, I see the, the acting county executive doing is just trying to restore Tri-County Council to where we were two years ago. Uh, I believe there was probably, you know, a little bit of, uh, contention, you know, contentious relationship between the prior executive and Tri-County Council, and all we're trying to do is, uh, recover that and get back to square one, and the funding that Wycomico County has always done in the past. I don't, I don't think there's, it's as if we're going to public, beyond, uh, additional huge numbers, we're just getting them back to square one, and, um, if you want Joe to establish some type of a, um, counties having first right of refusal on any properties, I think that's a discussion we could have with them, and I'm, I'm sure they would be quite, quite open to that.
So yes, the answer to your question is 50%, Wycomico County 25, 25, with the others.
Have they requested, and the board members, have they requested the other counties to increase their funding, or just Wycomico?
Yes, no, they've requested everybody. We actually requested for them to cut their number, because the number that I've actually put in here is less than their original request, their original request was over 800,000 dollars, and so we requested that they come back to us with a revised proposal, and that's where we came up with the 703.
Have the other two counties increased?
I don't have, I don't have that answer, I, I don't know, I don't know where they are in their process of approving their budgets and whether or not they approved them or not.
And again, I don't, the other two, I, I don't believe the other two counties cut the Tri-County Council as Wycomico did, um, Pam, again, I don't have the budget in front of me, but I believe we're simply getting back to where we were two years ago, or three years ago, aren't we?
We are getting back to, um, their operating section to the same number as where they were in 2020, we cut them in 2021 significantly, and then, uh, we're, um, giving them additional funding for, uh, some potential, uh, possible capital purchases.
Right, and I don't think, I think that cut was rather arbitrary, if not vindictive from, uh, from the prior year, so...
They, they are operating, um, at the, um, they are operating.
Throughout Wycomico County?
What, Tri-County, the, the bus service?
The shore transit, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I see them every day, their, their, their main, uh, transfer point is over by the other courthouse, and, um, they're there all the time, making transfers.
They definitely are working. Any more questions or comments on that? All right, moving on to public health. Anything on public health? Security. Any questions, comments, concerns on security?
What is security, is that just our front?
It's downstairs.
Downstairs.
We pulled it out, uh, in 2021, they pulled it out of other departments and made it its own department.
Once again, forward looking, just throwing this out there, it would be nice to have, you know, at any point in time, anyone could come up with a gun and find their way up, you know, it's not, it's not a hard, we don't really have a, we don't have a, you know, what, a metal detector, we don't, anything like the courts or anything else like that does have, you know, we, I know that would be an ongoing expense, but, uh, you know, this building's not exactly terribly secure, and, uh, if there's anything, you know, I think that's an issue I know that the city's had, and, but, um, just throwing that out there for coming years.
Mr. Hastings, I have to agree, um, I go to Baltimore and Annapolis a lot, and I stopped in one day to the Talbot County Courthouse, and you had to go through security to get in there, so it's probably something we should really consider in the near future, so I, that's been on my mind for several years now, and I'm glad you brought that up.
And I don't particularly want to go through security every time I'm coming in, but I'm just saying that the, the more that I've seen more tax on, more people focusing their energy from their dislike of federal government and trying to focus it on hurting local officials, you know, that, that's happened around the country, and it's probably going to...
We have a lot of employees in here that we need to protect, so yes, that's a good point. Anything else? The Extension Service. Nothing on the Extension Service, the Community Access Channel, PAC 14. Anything on that? All right, Economic Development. Oh, you ready?
No, no, I'm not.
Ready. Um, we've not, have we done, um, landfill yet?
No, that's on its own, it's its own department after the General Fund, we're going through the general...
Sorry about that.
We're going through the General Fund departments.
Sorry about that.
Fine. Um, so you don't have anything on PAC 14? Economic Development. Pensions and Retirement. Hospital and Disability.
That's a solid one.
You good? All right. Speaking of security, Workers' Comp Liability Insurance. Debt Retirement. Anything on Debt Retirement? Social Services. Moving on for Social Services, Continency Transfer Reserve. Questions, comments? All right, moving on, next page. Now, Fleet Vehicles. All right. Anything on Fleet Vehicles? Mr. Holloway?
I always think that there's, um, more opportunities to, um, put money in the roads budget, the county roads continuously, um, need repair, we've had a lot of issues with trash lately, um, drainage along the county roads is always an issue, um, so, I think, in the course of doing this budget, maybe we need to, um, look at trying to get some more money in roads. I know, I know they've seen a big increase, but again, like was said about shore transit, we're just returning them to where they've been before, and, um, they're still way below where they were before, um, the state, the state cut their...
Highway user.
Highway user revenues, so, anyway, that's just a statement right now.
I mean, we did fund them some part-time employees to help this year, I mean, it'll be interesting wi, with that funding to see, um, like everybody else, we're going to be going after the same applicant pool that everybody else is going after at the moment, so, we'll see how we do with that, but we also did give them a significant amount to try to get some roads done this year, which, um, hasn't been there.
And, uh, trash is still a big issue out there, isn't it, Mr. Holloway? Anything else on roads? All right, moving on to solid waste. Solid waste.
There's, um, there's going to be, um, something on the agenda the next council meeting about raising, um, the fees for solid waste, um, increasing the, um, fee for the second sticker, and also, I don't remember them talking about increasing the tipping fee.
It was, it was mentioned in passing, the, the main discussion was on the second sticker.
Right, how long is it, was it two years ago we raised the tipping fee, five dollars?
Uh, no, 21.
We raised the tipping fee, so now you're after another two dollars.
Well, but you're also looking at the, the level of, if you want this fund to be self-sustaining, this fund has to have a fund balance to be able to build the next set of cells, or we're going to have to look for another location for our trash.
Okay. You also realize the other side of that story is, is what happened in Worcester County, when they started raising their tipping fees, they lost the town of Ocean City, and they started sending their trash to, I think, New Jersey or New York, and they spiraled downward greatly, so we have that, that we have to, we have to be very conscious of.
Correct, but we are still one of the lowest in the area.
And we also...
If not the lowest.
Or the lowest.
And we also have the issue with the trash along the road that we've been dealing with extensively, so...
And I will suggest that one of the main, again, we just talked about it with roads, they don't have the employees, they don't have the corrections of, um, inmates that have been able to come out, so in the past, where I'm not sure it's more trash, I think it is the lack of us having the corrections and the inmates to be able to help pick it up.
So that means more trash on the roads if they haven't picked it up.
Right, but, I mean, how are we supposed, so...
Right, I, I get both your points.
But it's still the same amount that's going to the landfill.
No, I, I thought there was some discussion earlier that, um, the corrections inmates in other counties were working and picking up trash.
I was told, um, by the warden that hopefully by the end of May, they may be able to let some more people out to pick up trash, but that's still to be seen, so...
That's, that's to be seen, and you have to understand that the population that we have in, in, it has, the mix has changed with the pandemic over the last year, uh, what we have in there, uh, may not be the ones that you want, um, to let out.
And it's only half full, so, we'd be limited there.
On the correction side, you saw in their budget, they had a significant increase in their pre-release number request because of the fact that judges have made the decision that people, instead of putting them, incarcerating them, have been putting them on pre-release.
Mm-hmm. All right, Mr. Hastings?
I was going to say, it's nice to be able to go to WycomicoCounty.org and see the cleanup Wycomico, um, piece on there, that was actually very nice, and I've had multiple people reach out and say that that was good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings.
Are you getting a lot of response out of that, John?
Quite frankly, not as much as we thought, uh, and, uh, so, anyone out there, spread the word, just go and, uh, you know, help contribute to what you say is, is, uh, litter on the side of the road, and, uh, we're not receiving as much complaints about the litter on the road, that's not to say it's not there, and, and we do have active crews that go out and, and, and look, it's just, uh, um, we're hoping when trustees get back, uh, inmates get back, uh, cleanup Wycomico, uh, will free up, uh, our litter crews as well, and, uh, we'll, we're all in this together and, and get it.
And some, and some people just do it, you know, I mean, I see some people that, you know, they just routine, they routinely do certain sections of roads, you know, as part of their daily walk and things like that, and they just...
I do in front of my house.
Yeah.
I do the same. Um, anything else? All right, moving on, next we have the airport. Any question on the airports? No comments, no questions? Electrical Board. Local Management Board.
Do we have the numbers for that?
We don't yet have the, the, again, the number that we have, I have not gotten you those, um, back account numbers.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Anything else on the Local Management Board? The Narcotics Task Force is next. Any questions or comments on the Narcotics Task Force? All right, Recreation and Parks. Questions, comments? All right, moving on to the Civic Center, Wycomico County Youth and Civic Center, any questions or comments? Tourism. Questions or comments? All right, moving on, Grants and Mandates.
I had made note in here, and I only, I haven't, it's been a while since I marked up my, uh, my, my binder, but I saw the Grants Coordinator position somewhere in here for 42,000, I don't know if that was a new thing, is that what it was?
No, that's not, that's not in here.
It, uh, yeah, here it is. Uh, I don't know to what this goes to, or how to best to direct it to you, I've got it right here at the bottom of this, whatever this is, uh, it's been a while since I marked this up, so, um, but whatever, uh, the, the Grants Coordinator, I guess the, the larger question there on, are we hiring more, I know we talked about...
We're not hiring for the General Fund a, a Grants Coordinator. Can I, do you mind if I stand up and see what...
I think it's from the Local Management Board.
Yeah, there's one in the Local Management Board.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
What are you looking at, Local Management Board?
That's, that's within the Local Management Boards, and they, they have one in there that's funded each year.
Okay, well, uh, just following the conversation, I know we talked in previous years about adding more staff for grants, and I just want to find out where that was.
We did not request that in this year, we did request to, um, in the Finance Department, I will bring that one up, um, in the Finance Department to, and it's on the, um, Schedule of Changes, um, to change the Banking Assurance Officer to another accountant to help with monitoring all the different grants that we get, we do not have one that would help write grants, that is not a position that we funded or requested.
Nice we had a county-wide Grants Coordinator.
Yeah, I think there would be appetite among, I don't want to speak for anyone, but...
And we are looking into it.
Appreciate that.
You put money in the budget one year for that, but it never...
Yeah, it never panned out.
You went here, though.
Yeah, and I'll just say this as an example, I knew with the, but I, I know it's like, when I was the corporate board chair of the YMCA's, and, you know, we had a full-time grants person, and I'll just say this, annually, that position paid for itself literally like tenfold over, and it was just, you know, and it was just surprising how many grants we knew they would find, because it's just, there, you know, there's so much out there, and it, it, it is a monumental task, being able to sift through what's out there, and then be able to, you know, get those, you know, these, just, just, this variety of grants that float out there, so I think it's something definitely we want to seriously pursue.
Right, and I've probably said it 100 times, the Board of Education has one, and she does an excellent job. Anything else on Grants and Mandates? The Teen Adult Center. Questions, comments on the Teen Adult Center? All right, Maintenance of Aging in the Community, MAC. Questions or comments on that? All right. Commission on Aging. Questions or comments? Life Crisis Center. Questions or comments? All right, Ms. Harley, do you have anything else?
Do we have Wycomico Nursing Home, is that under, is that, I guess that's a, that's a other fund, right?
Yes.
Strike that. Reverse it.
I have a question. So I will be submitting a revised budget with the 396. Other changes, I, it, I want to avoid the possibility that unintended consequences happen with changes from the council. I understand council has the right to make changes, but sometimes there are other accounts that one account impacts. So if you make changes, I would love the opportunity to look at them prior to the June 1st meeting, if you have other changes that you're suggesting, just to ensure that we don't get into a situation where we don't have the budget balanced and we don't have the stuff in the right account, because I would, I would like us to be able to have a budget that balances and unintended consequences don't happen.
We need a balanced budget by June 15th, and hopefully we can get it done on June 1st.
And, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I appreciate you looking into the library and seeing the amount of the bond bill that they received.
Yep.
A million dollar increase is quite substantial, especially when we don't, we're not giving our own employees.
Well, but that's not an increase. That's, that's just continuing. We, we have a maintenance of effort number, but we didn't increase them from $500,000 to 1.5. We have been running over a million dollars since 2015 with them.
Okay. So we've been funding them quite a bit.
Yes.
More than?
We, we fund them more than the maintenance of effort number. We fund them at a lower percentage than other counties fund their libraries, but we do fund them above maintenance of effort.
Okay.
Ms. Harley?
So any cuts that would be made, council can make recommendations to add to certain departments.
Sure.
You take the money away from one, make the recommendation to add to another, and if administration doesn't agree, then the money would go into the undesignated fund balance per the charter.
Yeah. My fear is that if a cut is made that only a portion of something gets cut, I just, I would love the opportunity on the cuts to make sure that we all understand what those cuts are. You have the absolute right to make cuts. I'm not saying that you don't. What I'm saying is, is I'd love the opportunity to explain to you if there's anything else those cuts impact that you're not taking into account.
Sure. There's little discussion on changes to this budget, but I've heard chatter prior to this meeting about some changes. So if there is, we need to do something as soon as possible.
Yeah, chatter should have just been discussed. I mean, we have them here now. I mean, that was the purpose of
Like I said.
Having them here, so.
What we're being asked for, I think, right now is for us to tell them what we're going to do, and I don't think that's something we can do.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking for it today, but I am asking for it prior, having the opportunity to see that list prior to coming to the meeting and you wanting to adopt it. That is all I'm asking.
We do our meetings in public. I don't know whether that's a proper thing to do.
You would have to do it in private.
Right.
And I need to know
We don't meet in private and decide what the budget's going to be. We have to do that in public, so.
Yeah. And I need to know, because currently, right now, we have this on the June 1st agenda for adoption. So if you guys need more time, another work session, we need to know that. You do have until June the 15th, but the charter says by June the 1st, you should have an adopted budget, but you can extend it by resolution until June the 15th.
All right. The drop dead time is June 15th, and we were hoping to get it done by June 1st. So if, if there's anything that you're very serious about and you think we need to meet, we're probably going to have to set up a special work session prior to then. Mr. Hastings? John, are you saying something, John? Because I can hardly hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
Little bit. Go ahead.
All right. What I was going to say is, since this is a budget recap session, shouldn't we be taking a consensus now as to what cuts we want to see as opposed to June 1st? I mean, if we, if we, Larry, you say there's rumblings of people that are suggesting that we make changes. This is a recap session. It's a work session. And I would think that we would be taking a consensus now on what we wanted to see, cut or transfer or whichever.
Yes, I agree. All right. I did want to take a break before we met with the Board of Ed. I, like I said, I know people have been talking. We really need to discuss it now.
I mean, I can say that the two departments that I have heard from citizens have been Tri-County Council and the library. I think we've all received the ones from the library. And that's
So what are your thoughts on that?
Are you asking her or us?
Well, I was asking her. She said that she's been hearing from people, so I wanted to hear what the cut would be, or addition, or whatever it is.
What is people asking about the library?
The one that we all got on the library, the, the issue with it not being opened and that our own employees are not getting a pay increase.
I don't think I got an email from them.
Oh, you didn't? No, you're CC'd on that. We were all on it.
They did not get a pay increase last year when our employees did. So I will say, last year, Wycomico County employees got 5% and the library did not get a pay increase.
Right. And the library is not a county department.
Correct.
So.
We fund them, but they are not our department.
Right. So what were you thinking, Ms. Ackley?
I mean, I'm just, I'm putting it out there to see what, if there is something that, if we need to look at moving it to the Sheriff's Department, the volunteer fire companies, if there's another department that has, I know the Sheriff's Department did mention something, but if they didn't come back and have other requests, or if it's something we need to give to corrections.
My question, I'm confused, because you're, you're saying the complaint was that they didn't get enough, enough funding to do a raise, but then you're saying, are you saying you want to cut the library?
No, I'm saying I have heard the most from citizens on the increase in the library funding and Tri-County Council.
I have no, I'm telling you, I have no appetite to cutting the library. I mean, I've heard from citizens, but their concern is we're the lowest funded library in the
State.
Yes, percentage-wise in the state. I mean, these are the concerns I've heard. It's our lack of funding. So I don't understand how
The one, the email that we had gotten, we were all on that, that the library was not opened, yet we are increasing the funding for the library.
Well, the library will be reopening. I mean, that's, that's something from the past you're talking about, but it's not as if we're going to be going through COVID for another 12 months. You know, we're talking about funding for the next 12 months.
They're still not opened.
Yet.
I know.
Let me find it one there. It's something that, it's information I'm sharing with you that I've heard from citizens, so.
Was there a figure that you would, a figure that you would like to use to reduce that funding, or?
Well, I think looking at other departments, are there any other departments, whether it be the Sheriff's Department, I know they were discussing new cars, if you think that that would be appropriate to move the funding there?
At this time, I would say it's the council's decision if they want to cut and then move the funding. There is no additional requests that have come in to our department, the budget that we have submitted, other than the mistake that I want to correct. Again, other than that, there is no changes that I am recommending to this budget.
Okay. Well, I guess if the Sheriff's Department doesn't
They have not come back to me with anything.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That you tabled this work session until after the Board of Ed, since we're behind schedule for them.
Well, not only, not only that, I'm still waiting, we're still waiting on that documentation from Shore Transit. That never came yet. But you said you were going to get hard copies on, so we really can't even continue this after we meet with the Board of Ed.
Okay.
And I'll just remind council that, you know, the charter says we can make cuts to this budget. We don't add to the budget.
No, it would be a recommendation.
It would be a recommendation removed to a reserve fund.
The charter doesn't recommend, just as we can make cuts.
So it said, I think this is a great budget, and I'd love to see this go forward as is. I think this is the best budget I've seen in years. This is the best process I've seen in years, most amount of information I've seen since the entire time I've been here. Of course, I haven't been here nearly as long as some of the other folks on the council. But nonetheless, this is a great process. We've got a pretty darn good budget and good people leading it, so I feel really good about it, and I'd love to see this goes forward just as is.
And I agree with that.
I would have to say, I have, I have no interest in seeing any cuts made.
What'd he say?
He has no interest in seeing any cuts.
Okay.
I thought there was some interest before in adding to the Sheriff's Department budget for cars.
That's what's my understanding, but I guess not.
At this point in time, they have not come back to me for anything additional from the last meeting.
I guess if they don't want it, we can't force it on them, right?
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion on that? All right, let's move on. Do we want to take a break before we meet with the board?
Five-minute break.
Good afternoon. We can reconvene in the budget session with the county council. So if you would like, just go through your budget, highlight what you feel is important. I know everything's important, but what you really want us to hear in a short amount of time.
In a short amount of time. Okay. I think we can do that. Good afternoon. Donna Hanlon, Superintendent, and we have Jean Malone, Board Chair, and John Paul. I don't think any other board members have joined us. We have a number of staff here who can answer questions as
Yes.
As they come up. But most importantly, we have our comptroller, Jesse Reed, who's distributing materials, and he's going to give you a short presentation that
Okay.
Really hits on the question of revenue and expenditures and a balanced budget.
Yes.
I have the same thing.
All right. Ms. Reed?
Why I said a short amount of time is because there is another commitment here at 1:30, and by quarter after, or 20 after, we really should wrap up, because they have to set up.
Sure.
Should be short and sweet.
Keep that in mind.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Dodd, Vice President Holloway, council members. I thought I'd begin by reviewing the amended county maintenance of effort calculation that recently came out of Maryland House Bill 1372, and then review the result that this change had on our proposed budget. So if you'll flip to page two, this page shows the new county maintenance of effort funding formula, which calls for you to take the current year appropriation of 47.682 million, it's in the middle of the page, and divide that by the greater of the three-year average of the 2017, 18, and 19 enrollment, or the fall 2019 enrollment, whichever is greater. So for us, the greater of the two numbers was the fall 2019 enrollment of 14,482.25, which is letter A on here, top right of the page. So 47.682 million divided by 14,482.25 gives us a 3292.48 per pupil amount. Per state law, this number gets multiplied by 1.025 if the county education effort, which is defined as county aid divided by county wealth, is lower than the statewide average. And because their county effort is lower than the statewide average, the formula applies the 2.5% kicker to the 3292.48 per pupil amount, to bring us to the 337479 per pupil amount, which is letter C on here, a little more than halfway down the page on the right. This in turn gets multiplied, again, by the greater of the three-year average of 17, 18, and 19, or the fall of 2019 enrollment, which again, for us, the greater of the two was the fall of 2019, 14,482.25. And this number times 337479 gives us our FY '22 local appropriation of 48.874 million, which is an increase of 1.192 million. And I know it's a very complex calculation.
And then you spin around twice in your chair.
Exactly.
And it's official. Right.
There's a lot to it. So if you have any questions now, or if you want to wait to the end, whatever your preference.
If I may, council, that number is in the budget, except I have $1 higher. So I have it at three instead of two, because the original calculation I had from the Board of Education had it with decimal point, and as an accountant, I rounded up, and I found out today that the state rounds down. So, so I want to let you know that this number is in the budget. It just happens to be in the budget, $1.
I got a dollar.
Well, we actually, no, the dollar's in there. They actually get $1 more.
Okay.
The way the budget is currently written is
Okay, we didn't raise your budget.
Thanks.
So I just wanted you to be aware, before they go into the rest of their conversation, that this number is funded in the budget.
And Pam's defense, I think she did it correctly. I think she rounded correctly. I think the state rounded correctly, for what it's worth. We have to go with what they provide.
We did finally yesterday get that number certified from the state.
Finally.
So, yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next page. This is the new updated revenue page that reflects our new maintenance of effort figure, which again, is an increase of approximately 1.192 million. I didn't change any estimates on other revenue from our original proposed budget, as I'm still predicting our rentals to be down at the start of the year. Our state aid has not changed, and the governor is still not holding us harmless on our pre-K funding. So our overall state funding is still down a little over $1 million, about 1.036 million, a little more than halfway down the page. Our prior year fund balance below that, of course, did not change, and as of the last proposed budget that was approved back in March, we were showing a $291,000 increase in the cost of doing business, which is the increase in costs just to open the doors next year, the rising costs of our insurances and bus contractor increases. Thankfully, and I'm at the bottom of the page now, we were able to create reductions in the amount of 808,000, primarily as a result of expected salary savings from retirements and utility savings from converting our lights to LED light fixtures, which is, has really helped us out on our utility bills this year as well. We think it's going to continue to help us in the years to come. We needed 1.9 million to fund our negotiated agreements, and as you can see, the sum of those three items, combined with the new revenue of only 838,000, left us with a budget shortfall of approximately 562,000. So the next page. So in order to fund this shortfall and create a balanced budget, we proposed moving seven teachers that are allowable under the grant from the general fund into the CARES grant for a period of up to two years. That, that grant is good for two years, because that grant is good for two years. We will, however, have to pick these seven positions back up in the general fund two years from now when the grant expires. So this is essentially just a bridge to get us through the next two years in hopes that our enrollment rebounds.
Jesse, I just had a quick question.
Sure.
So the, when we're looking at, we're looking at the proposed budget, it's, you see the decrease there because of the enrollment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We can come back to that if you want to.
No, I just wanted to make sure, because I was following along with these numbers, if that was the reason, that's the reflective reason.
That's correct.
It's not that we're, you're being offended less, you just have a little
All those numbers are based on enrollment, because our enrollment's down, our state aid's down. That's exactly correct.
Okay.
Let me see, where was I?
You were talking about salaries with CARES.
Yeah, so this, this is a decrease in the number of teachers we were originally planning to move as a part of our proposed budget back in March. In that budget, we were moving 15 teachers, but with the recent increase in county maintenance of effort that was just approved by the legislature, we didn't have to move quite as many. And yesterday, our board approved a budget amendment to reflect the additional increase in county maintenance of effort and a, and a decrease in the number of teachers that we are temporarily having to move to the CARES grant from 15 down to seven. I apologize, I think my mic keeps going in and out.
It does.
Mine does, too.
Several of them do it.
Okay. So this is kind of a unique year in that we had to find, you know, things in order to cut, in order to balance the budget this year. We didn't really have new requests. We actually had to find some areas to cut in order to balance the budget.
So these teachers funded by CARES, they still get the same state benefits?
Yes, sir. We're transferring.
As their retirement continues, good?
They'll lose, lose nothing, and we'll pick them back up two years from now when we need to.
Okay.
In the general fund. Finally, last page, we thought we'd briefly review our capital requests for FY '22 as part of our capital plan. As you recall, we're requesting 4.7 for the Beaver Run school replacement. This is the final county construction allocation for that school, final year. 10 million for Mardella Middle High renovation addition. That's the second allocation towards construction. We have FY '23 and FY '24 forthcoming, and we're requesting 1.754 million And we're requesting 1.754 million for Westside Intermediate Roof Replacement. That's a summer of 2021 project.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Well, knowing this capital plan there, it seems like we've been talking about Beaver Run, Mardella, and Westside for many years now, so I'm glad to see it come to fruition, so.
Got to. Thank you very much.
Comments?
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Your presentation, everybody?
Okay.
You know it's coming. So I'm going to ask. You all made the news last night, I guess, about this public, this book that's in Parkside. I guess my question is, what's the purpose of having a book like that in our schools?
We are constant, we are currently reviewing the books based upon the concern that was expressed. Typically, we receive those concerns if there's apparent concern about a book in a media center through the school rather than through the media, but in any case, we will be going through our process, taking a look at them, and making sure that they are appropriate for our media collections. One of the books, in fact, that had been mentioned in the, the Post was, was, that concern was expressed several years ago, and that book is no longer in general circulation. So we do have a process where we will review the books, and that's our current plan.
How, how did they get there? I guess that's my, another question.
So to be quite honest with you, Mr. Holloway, I've been reviewing that process too. That was put in place by a previous superintendent, the process, but it's my understanding that media specialists, when they want to put a book in the, in the collection, that there are some required documents which have to do with reviews by, and I'm trying to think of what some of the organization, I wasn't prepared for that question, but there are some organizations that determine the appropriateness of books for media centers. But obviously, people have varied views on books that are in our media centers, and so just because they pass that review and are entered in the collection doesn't mean that we aren't open to reviewing and considering moving something out of this, out of the collection, out of general circulation, or determining that it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Malone, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Anything else on the board's budget? Question's comment. Ms. Harley?
So the maintenance of effort, I know that there was a bill presented this past session to correct the Kerwin bill to make sure that the Kerwin funding could be since we lost the year last year. So the number for the maintenance of effort has now been certified and
Your mic.
With that new bill passing.
That is correct. Because it's through that bill that the change in how it's calculated, meaning the three-year average or the, or whichever's greater, 2019, was in the most recent bill that passed in the legislature this year.
And we just received the certification form yesterday. I'll, I'll get that over to you as soon as I can.
All right, thank you.
So just out of curiosity, so what will they do next year? Because that COVID year would come into that three-year average, but I guess it is the higher of the three. Does that correct the COVID? Is there a way to like, you know, compensate for the COVID year? When we do it next year, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but.
They're going to exclude 20 next year as well. It's going to be the higher of whatever the enrollment is or a three-year average, but it's going to exclude FY '20.
For as long as 20 would be in that three-year average, it would be excluded.
Be excluded.
So what if the enrollment continues to decline?
I believe it would be the high, the, the three-year average of 21, 18, and 19.
18 and 19.
Don't you just keep going till we get the highest?
Is there any official study done to understand why our enrollment's declining?
I don't know that I would consider it official, but we know that the majority of those students either went to homeschooling or a, a great majority of them were pre-kindergarten students, and they remained in private daycare. And we're already seeing our numbers for pre-kindergarten through our current registration process going back up.
And they are declining from 2019, which was our highest enrollment year and, and that we've had in recent years.
Well, compared to, do you have the numbers of population of available students for you to take into the school so you know how many that you're losing to homeschooling or private schools or whatever? Is there a way to track that, I guess?
You mean available number of students to attend public school versus how many we get?
I know that we know the number of homeschooled students.
Students in total, I guess.
Into total, and then how many we get in public school versus others, right?
Right, right.
I know that we know the number of homeschooled students. We can look at the number of students, for instance, at some of our area private schools, but we can't always determine necessarily whether they're our students or whether they're Worcester Counties or Somerset Counties. Mrs. Miles, I know you deal with this more on a everyday basis. Do you want to make any comments or anything additional?
If you come to a mic, because this is being recorded for transparency. What's that? It is turned on now? Okay, good.
I would just add to what Dr. Hanlon just shared, that the data that we're able to check with, I think, Mr. Holloway, tell me if I'm interpreting correctly, but you're talking about the total number of youth, school-aged youth in the county
That's correct.
who may be eligible. We would not have access to that total number outside of census information, but we do have information relating to how many students were with us and may have transitioned out to a private school or to another county or to another state, as well as to homeschooling, and we follow that very closely in terms of the enrollment and the transitions and the withdrawals. Thank you.
Do you ever follow up when you lose students, like to a private school or homeschooling and find out, get a reason from the parent? Why, okay, why, why did this happen?
Well, I can tell you, this year, it's we know why this year is.
Okay.
Yes, I, I don't know, except for anecdotally conversations that may happen at the school level where there's a relationship between teachers and administrators and families. They may have that information, but we don't track that information.
Ms. Hastings?
Just a broader budget question. I know a couple of years ago, we were out of the 24 jurisdictions in Maryland. With that jurisdictions per pupil funding, we were the second lowest in the state with, I think Caroline County was the lowest in the state. Are we currently still the second lowest in the state, or do we know?
We're still second lowest.
All right. Any more questions or comments? Anything from the staff or board members?
Joined by Mr. Murray, our vice chair.
I saw you sneaking in. Welcome. Glad to have you. All right, council. Great, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Counsel, hold, hold on one second. Hold on one second. Not, it's not a board question. Sorry. I did want to let you know that as I said, I'm going to submit
Thank you, guys.
with the revision for the 396. The other thing that I am suggesting in the revision is that we attach the personnel position. Position classification listing. I could not come up with that name.
Thank you, Levin.
And then, then you'd have the changes, and that would set the, that would set what our population of employees and rates are as they currently stand and what's in the budget and what changes we're proposing.
Because the budget bill has already been introduced, everything that you change now has to be amended by council. So if you can make it very clear of the changes.
Yes, it'll be very clear that this is an addition that I'm asking for, and I'm looking for this addition as well. So those were the two changes. And the question I have for council is, do you want me to bring their into the, in line with the MOE by a dollar or not? I don't care. I just, I, I need to know.
I don't care.
I don't care.
We trust you.
Okay, well, then it'll stay at the three, so they'll get an extra dollar this year.
Ms. Harley, the amendment, if there's any changes amendment, is that voted on after the budget or before the budget?
It would be during that budget process.
So before our final vote, we can amend it through the council. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion to second all in favor.
Thank you.
All right, thank.